This conference will now be recorded.
So, Esper. I probably want to shut that one off. Well, yeah, shut that one off. Well, going to hit record button. I'll take care of that.
Oh. Thank you.
So I'll make sure that.
Forgot about that part.
Got six thirty, ready?
Sure.
Yeah, six thirty, Kevin. Kevin, can you hit record?
Yeah.
Being recorded.
We are recording. Very good. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March third Select Board meeting. As is traditionally for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I do not know that this is being recorded. It just said it is no longer being recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair Boucher.
Yes, Lisa.
Would you check to see that the meeting actually is being recorded as I heard on my end that it's no longer being recorded?
It says it's recording over here, Lisa.
Thank you.
Very good. We have some minutes to approve.
We do. We have three sets of minutes this evening. The first one is February third. Lisa was not absent. Lisa was absent on that one.
No approve?
I move that we approve the minutes for February third, 2025. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Meeting minutes for February sixth. Everyone is present.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes for February sixth, 2025. Second.
Roll call vote because Lisa's revoked. Whitney?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
My vote.
And the minutes for February eighteenth, Whitney was not present.
I move that we approve the minutes for February eighteenth, 2025.
Roll call. Nicole?
Aye.
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 Lisa?
Aye.
And I abstain.
Four zero one. Additions to the agenda. It's good to see everybody here tonight. So historically, the Select Board does not entertain public comment. But after some good conversations, we're going to last some public comment tonight. If you wish to speak, there's a sign up sheet right by that microphone right there. We'll take at least the first ten and then we'll see how it goes from there. We have one appointment tonight. Mod Hock Frencho, the Creative Economy Committee, with the final approval and implementation of the Transfer Station mural design.
Hi there. My name is Mod Hock Frencho. I'm the Creative Economy Coordinator for Belcher Town.
I'm Cindy Harbison. I'm the library director and I'm the Creative Economy.
Just so you know, these don't project.
So we have to do our own projection. Great. Thank you for the reminder. All right. So we have a brief presentation to share. We're here on behalf of the Creative Economy Committee, which has been working on the Transfer Station container murals for the last year. And we're here seeking final approval from the Select Board for the designs. So I'm going to quickly share. We'll begin just a little bit of background. Start with some project background and then we'll move into the designs that we're seeking approval for. So here are our project goals. For the Transfer Station mural project is really to create a more cheerful and pleasant atmosphere at the Transfer Station, engage residents in the recycling process, emphasize those themes, and really represent Belcher Town's identity. This is our timeline for the project. As you can see, we've been ongoing for a while. Cindy will share a little bit more about the beginning of this with the training. But we outlined the project, worked with the committee to develop the material and had a community survey over the summer, selected the artists and have been developing the designs. And then here we are tonight, seeking approval so that we can implement.
So it started last year. We applied for a grant for Making It Public, which is a grant program through the New England Foundation for the Arts and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And that provided a set of trainings for three employees. Maude, myself, and my colleague Jennifer Whitehead took these trainings to walk us through the process for how to do municipal art projects, art projects, public art in a municipality. And so we received $15,000 for the grant. And all of that is being put towards this project. So it's entirely grant funded. You're doing.
One of the kind of core areas that they, the training focused on was on community engagement. And we had a great process. We invited folks to participate on social media, on the website, and the Sentinel. And really importantly, and fun at the Transfer Station. And we had 99 people participate, the majority of them at the Transfer Station, peak summer heat. It was an experience, but everyone was really positive. And the majority of people were really positive in support of the project and offered an incredible array of insights into the themes, into what it means in Belcher Town specifically, this kind of focus on sustainability and some imagery ideas that have subsequently found their way into the designs that we're really excited to share soon. But they fed into the call for artists so that they knew how to best apply and put their design concepts forward. And so this is a kind of snapshot of our process is that we have, within the Creative Economy Committee, a working group that's made up of Cindy Harbison, the library director, Linda Leduke, the DPW director, Molly Robinson from the Cultural Council, Jennifer Whitehead, youth librarian, and myself. So we have been moving this process forward and keeping in close communication with the committee throughout. We had 12 really strong responses to the call and have been working with the committee throughout.
So a big piece of this project is community engagement. And so all three of the selected artists are going to involve community engagement in some fashion. In early January, Cowan Odurji had a creative art workshop at the library where the kids who attended got to design their own animal and those were incorporated into the design. Joshua Smith will be sharing videos on social media throughout his process. And then Melissa Pandino will have a community paint day as part of her community engagement piece. And then to celebrate, we'll have a community trash gala after all of the murals are complete.
Look out for an invite on that soon. So this is just a few more details on how the process unfolded. Maybe a little nitty gritty. But again, just we work back and forth, pulling together community engagement, the stakeholder group of the committee and the working group that was continuing to move work forward and kind of make sure that everyone was involved. And so we'll, yeah, we'll begin by first reviewing the designs as they've been developed from the initial concepts. And we'll look at all three of them from kind of concept to design and then seek approval.
So our first design was Cowan Odurji. This is the concept where he has a very cartoon style where it shows the animals planting, they're cleaning up trash from the river and it's very recreational and outdoorsy. He incorporated the student work from that workshop, which is done in the top, which is hard to see here, but the little creature. Oh, wow. So the little creatures there are the ones that the kids created. And then he transformed them into these permanent figures so they can see it identifiable. And then we worked with design meetings with the muralists and feedback from the working group to create a final design, which is here. And so a couple of the changes include adding, you know, some small tweaks like the recycle sign to the the cart, the O and the Oriole sign to incorporate, you know, our town and our schools into that and making it really clear what they're picking up. So this is the final design for the first of the three designs. And that's what it is projected to look like on the mural itself, on the, sorry, on the container itself.
Our second mural design began here. This is Melissa Pandina's concept. And we really were attracted to the way that she pulled in so much of the imagery and ideas that were submitted directly to the survey around reuse and upcycling and the, you know, the egg carton planting plant starts to focus on the garden and all ages coming together, cycles of life. And we thought it was maybe a lot happening in this image. So we asked if she could add more folks, a little less background and more emphasis on upcycled materials and reuse to emphasize this idea of sustainability and here. And then to really similarly to kind of make the contrast a little higher so that it was more legible text and the theme was really brought home.
The third design is is from Belcher Town artist Joshua Smith. So this one has a very different style. And that was one of the things that we wanted was for the the three containers to each have very different styles and contribute to sort of make sure that everybody sees, you know, a different one that they're maybe drawn to. So this one incorporates more of the history. So there's the Clap Library and the church and the Stone House in the first concept. And then we had him take it so that there was a different design on the other side. Okay. So then some other images, sort of historic and the draft design and then the rear of the container. And then that was all encompassed together with some other minor tweaks during the design process to the final design here.
So those are the projects. This project, as it's developed over the last year from this initial training and idea to piloting public art through the municipality, community engagement, stakeholder engagement throughout, resulting in these designs, which the Creative Economy Committee enthusiastically approved and recommended to send to the Select Board for final approval. So that next steps would be, as outlined in the timeline, just begin sourcing materials and begin implementation as soon as it's warm enough.
Awesome. So you're looking for us to pick one of the three tonight?
To approve all three.
Approve all.
There's one each different for each.
Oh, gotcha. Any thoughts?
I have a thought. I have a thought. On mural design number one, is there any way, not trying to create additional costs with changes, but to maybe say on the bottom, like right here, that it was somehow created or inspired by the students?
Yeah, that's something that we've been talking about is specifically at the, like, the community event, the trash gala event, to bring back the students who participated and to give them a special honor and to note somewhere. That was something I think we, across the board, we realized that none of these had an acknowledgement. So we'll need to add that in throughout.
Any questions?
I will also say, this is actually in reference to what Nicole's saying, that it indicates who the artist was because the first, the first design, obviously, it's more, it's a kid's design. So if we could have it, you know, right on, right on it so that people understand, oh, this was made by kids, you know, and honor then the artist for the second and the third. So I guess what I'm saying is, it sounded like you might be looking at a separate piece that says, here's who did what. And I'm wondering if we want to just put it right on the mural itself.
I think that's what we just talked about, Lisa.
Yeah.
Oh, good. Hey, I'm in Florida on vacation, so.
Without any further questions, there's a motion?
I move that we approve the final mural designs for the Transfer Station mural design project.
Roll call vote, Whitney?
Aye.
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 Lisa?
Aye.
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Moving on, five A, review the application for the one day liquor license for Vanished Valley. Are there any, are there any questions from the board on this?
No.
No.
Can you get a motion?
Yes.
Oh, the date, sure.
Thank you. So we have a one day liquor license application from Vanished Valley. They want to hold a event in conjunction with the Devon Lane Farm Sugarhouse on March fifteenth. There'll be no sales for offsite consumption. Everything will be onsite.
Very good. Motion?
I move that we approve the application of Vanished Valley Brewing for a one day liquor license for Sugar Fest at Shattuck Sugarhouse on March fifteenth, 2025.
Aye, second.
Made the second and roll call vote. Whitney?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Aye. Lisa?
Aye.
Moving on, endorse the common victor's license for Mesa Mexicano. Nice to have a Mexican place in town, right?
Yay.
I'm sorry. Very good. Any questions or move to approve?
I move we approve the Massa Mexicano LLC at nine North Main Street in Belcher Town. Their victor's license.
Second.
Roll call vote, Whitney?
An enthusiastic yes.
Nicole?
Do you have frozen margaritas? Aye.
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 Lisa?
Aye.
Very good. Victor's license for Dragonfly O five thirty. Business has tables on the green by Tara. Yeah, that's C. Five C. Is there a motion?
I move that we endorse the Common Book Taller's license for Dragonfly O five three zero LLC DBA Tara's Fight on the Green by Tara.
Second.
Made the second and roll call, Whitney?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
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 Lisa?
Aye.
Very good. Five D, review approved application policy for alteration of outdoor alcoholic beverage service area. Steve, if you wouldn't mind just explaining what this one's about?
Sure. Last year, the governor signed into law, Chapter forty A, Section three B, which allows the expansion of liquor consumption outside of premises. So we've actually, as part of that, well, not only does it expand the possibility, but it puts the authority in the local licensing board, which is the Board of Select Board. So what was necessary to allow establishments to have outdoor dining areas where liquor and food can be served is the Select Board would need to adopt a policy and an application process. So the staff in the Infinity House has been working on this for quite some time. We've consulted with council. We've reached out to other communities who already had policies in place and we developed one. So very quickly, the policy has several items in it. The first being a statement that existing facilities are not required to reapply. The second addresses new establishments. The third is that the town manager will run the application process on behalf of the Select Board. The fourth item is that a plan will be required showing many of the amenities that are going to be in the outdoor dining area. The fifth describes the locations that are acceptable. The sixth is that the applicant must have proof of property rights. Seven is insurance. Eight is that no entertainment will be allowed without a separate entertainment license. The ninth item is that the outdoor dining slash consumption area has to be contiguous on the same property. Ten, that the outdoor area has to be delineated with a proper delineation, a fence, ropes, you know, something to that effect. The eleventh addresses tents. The twelfth addresses ADA, AAB standards. The thirteenth item is conditions for existing licensees. The fourteenth is revocation criteria. Or was that the fifteenth? Or am I here?
That was the fourteenth.
Yep. Fifteenth item addresses any changes to the law that may come from local or state levels, federal levels, public health. The sixteenth item is modifications to any approval. And the seventeenth is severability clauses so that if something's not proper. And then the procedure will be no different than any other liquor license that the local licensing authority handles. We'll reach out to all the departments, solicit comments, and bring it back in front of the board for a discussion.
Very good.
So I can make changes if there's any suggestions or we can prove it as is.
Any questions, concerns from the board?
No.
Lisa?
No.
Very good. Your motion to approve?
I move that we approve the revised alteration of outdoor premises policy indicating that applications will no longer require ABCC approval.
Seconded.
Made the second and roll call vote. Whitney?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
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 Lisa?
Aye.
Very good. Moving on, review the planning board's proposed zoning bylaw amendments. Steve, you got a quick analysis of this one?
I do. So anytime the planning board or zoning board proposes changes to our zoning bylaws, they come before the board. Typically, the board would just remand them back to the planning board with any comments. In this case, we have a few adjustments. Let me just get to that page. The first is Chapter one forty-five of the code, Section two. We're adding a definition of what a contractor's yard consists of. And this is in response to a more broad definition from the state. The second is, again, Chapter one forty-five of the town code, Section sixty-eight. We're clarifying language about the complaint process. This is also in definite response to state law. And the third has to do with accessory dwelling units, commonly referred to as in-law apartments. The governor has also created new state laws regulating how towns would view accessory apartments in their zoning. Sort of town planner has proposed language to meet the conditions of the state law. And that is, again, Chapter one forty-five of the code of Belcher Town, Section twenty-nine point one.
What's that? Got it? Is there a motion to approve?
We have to remand it.
Oh, that's right. Any questions or concerns?
No.
Lisa?
No.
Let's remand it back, please. No concerns from the Select Board. Next item up, town meeting childcare services. Lisa, do you want to talk about this or do you want Steve to?
Well, I wanted to be explored. I've heard from parents that this has been a barrier to why they've not been able to attend town meeting. And I believe that we need to offer some childcare services so that we encourage people to not only attend but participate in the democracy of our town. So Steve, if you have more to say on, we had talked briefly together about how we might imagine gathering experts on this. We have experts in town on childcare. I know they have to be quarried and, but we do have experts we could go to. Started talking to any of those people.
I don't know if that was feedback. Yes.
Okay.
I did. So I did reach out to one of several facilities in town just to try to garner some feedback. And it was a mixed response. The simple answer is they're not interested in opening their doors for a drop in during town meeting because of the licensing requirements that are involved, the inboarding of participants and the amount of paperwork that goes with it, the liability behind it. So I don't know if that will be consistent if I make additional phone calls. The other option that we have.
We're talking about the day school, is that right?
No, it's one of the other ones.
Okay. So, you know, we have one response. I do think we need to do due diligence in working with other quarried folks who might have an interest in providing childcare. We can set limits. You know, I'm not saying that this is something, a cost that the town can take on, but if it's a nominal fee so that we get parents to town meeting, that that be at least put out to to the citizens and see if this is something they'd be willing to pay for. In other words, I think we need to do some more work.
Yeah, Lisa, can I?
As I just stated, I've only had time so far to make one phone call to one of the town establishments.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing that.
And Lisa, I don't know if you can hear me. I'll hop into and say I also called one local business. Even I checked in about that. They're thinking it over. They may be interested, agreed, they'd prefer to do it onsite where town meeting takes place if the.
I agree. I agree.
I also wanted to share that I attended a Massachusetts Municipal Association meeting on town halls back in February. And there are lots of other towns that are doing this well. So I think that we can look to them as experts as well. They are doing it either through the schools volunteering services onsite or hiring outside contracting. They also offer, the town of Plainville offers an opportunity for the parents to actually stay with their children in an ante space. And then when it's time to vote, they come in, vote, and then go back out again.
I love this creative thinking.
I do appreciate too, I missed the last meeting. I appreciate that you all moved town meeting up a little bit. Half an hour helps. I hope in the future, though, we can even, maybe go even a bit earlier because bedtime's usually a bit before eight o'clock.
Well, the other thing we talked about, Whitney, is making sure that we start with what the most important items are for town citizens. what the most important items are for town citizens and saving accolades and awards for a different night. So we get right down to business.
It's very forward-thinking. Thank you.
So the other option that I've looked into is, I've been talking to the recreation director about whether or not the town can sponsor a drop-in facility on-site. I was able to secure the cafeteria from the superintendent, so we do have a location. The rector manages a safe sitter program, and he felt that he could gather up some volunteers through that program to run a program.
That's great.
My concern with that is the liability with it. So I did reach out to our insurance carrier and received some feedback. Let me just get to that. This is in opposition to that idea because they're asking for volunteers to be over the age of 21 with a minimum of a year's experience with children under five years old. Background checks, quarry checks, which would be standard practice. They want to have at least two adults in the room. So if we do have teenagers helping, we would need at least two. They have concerns about mixed age groups. They would like the different age groups to be separated. And these are all the same things that I heard from the company that I reached out to today. So it's going to take a little bit of finagling, no matter what route we go. They would like to have separate bathrooms for different age groups, different play areas for different age groups. Food will absolutely not be allowed to be brought in. If there's going to be refreshments, they have to be provided so that we make sure that we don't have anything with peanut allergies in them. They want waivers from the parents. And if it's going to become a regular occurrence, we're going to have to have a more robust conversation. So it's, while it's not a no, it's certainly a lot to think about. I think we can make it happen. It's just going to be a little bit of work, and we need to find the people. I don't know where we can find adults 21 and over who are not going to want to be there to vote. That's one of my concerns. So we're going to have to try to work with professionals from out of town.
Well, we have a room full of people right now, some of whom I know are quarry-checked and who might have an interest in serving the community in such a special way. I'm not saying that we take a, you know, a hands-up right now, but perhaps if anyone in the room or is listening has an interest in this and could potentially work with the town on providing a service like this just for town meeting so that more parents could attend, perhaps they could call you, Steve. The other thing I'm suggesting is perhaps Whitney, who's, thank you for the work you've done on this, and myself, and Steve, and anyone else that you think should be a part of a smaller committee, could perhaps meet and brainstorm together and parse out perhaps more tasks so it's not all on you.
Steve, maybe we could create some reciprocity with Granby, Amherst. You know, if they're looking to do this at their meetings, maybe we could have folks from Granby come in on the day that our town meeting is and vice versa for theirs. It's volunteer. I mean, someone's going to want to have to dedicate the time.
Well, I think my first choice would be to have a private company do this for us if we could somehow manage that because they're already established. If we can't find somebody and we try to do this in-house, the company that I reached out to today was more than willing to help with organizing.
It's the cost that I'm concerned with always, you know. I don't know what the cost is, but it, also, I know that folks want to get to maybe next agenda items. And so I'm wondering if it's a good idea to just continue this conversation in a small committee meeting. And Nicole, I think you would also wanted to talk about the elder community.
Yeah, so just in reading this, one of the things that came to my mind is, should we think about maybe reaching out to the bus companies, Hume's Transportation, to see if they'd be willing to donate their time to bus seniors in?
For town meeting.
For town meeting.
Yeah.
What were the names of the companies?
Hume's and Bus Company down on North Liberty, maybe?
The five stars.
First student, yeah.
Well, to Lisa's point, maybe we just table this one for tonight and move on.
Yeah. Although, just wanted to know if Steve wants to do a meeting, though, so that we continue. We don't have much time until town meeting, and so if we are going to do this, we need the time to plan.
He's saying he said yes.
Yeah.
I think we need to. I'm just not sure when I'm going to fit it in because we're pretty tight up with budgets. I'll probably have you maybe work directly with Kyle Tebow if we're leaning towards. Yeah, if we're leaning towards doing this internally, that would probably be best.
Yeah, and Whitney, you'll work with me?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks.
You have my support.
Okay.
Moving on to 5G, the school consolidation/regionalization study committee formation. Last week, there's an interesting article in the Sentinel, if they might have read it. Select Board took up the question of like, should they start looking at regionalization? With Granby, that's what I meant, yep. Granby Select Board. As it turns out, last week, the superintendent of our school district put forth a proposal to close Cold Spring. You know, these types of things, they happen pretty fast, right? So there may be an opportunity, there may not be an opportunity, but to this board, I feel like there's an opportunity that's worth exploring. But we're the select board. Fortunately, we have the superintendent and Ruby Banzal here tonight. I'd like to start with this committee first, though. What are your initial thoughts?
Oh, I think it's absolutely worth exploring.
I think we need to strike while the iron's hot.
I also would like to explore any option that we have, but I think it's very important, of course, that the schools own this and that we have a seat at the table as well.
That's where I was going next. Superintendent Cameron, Vice Chair Ruby, what are your initial thoughts on a topic like this?
For me, I think we're open to any suggestion. I think facing Cold Spring was an option that we wanted to hold off on, but we need to make. You know, there's a lot of rumors going out there. I don't know enough about regionalization. I think we need to bring someone in for the test. I think we need, you know, certainly we can explore it. I think everything's on the table. I think two things that, you know, people need to be aware of is, no matter who you regionalize with, the better contract you have to adopt. Someone's making, you know, twenty, I don't know, $500,000 in salaries, you have to adopt that contract. You're going to lose some control of funding with regionalization, but I don't know all the ins and outs. But I think you just need to know that going in.
I agree. I don't know anything about regionalization, but I do know that it's something that a small rural town like ours, we should at least seriously consider, like, what are the ins and outs, so that everyone here gets to make an informed choice about-
I agree with you, but I think there's research that says a town like Belchertown shouldn't do it.
Sure.
And I think we need to explore it both, you know, just because Granby wants to jump on board doesn't necessarily mean that Belchertown should do the same thing. So I think we just need to be very clear, have all options opened, and go in with options being open. Because I'll be honest, the only thing that I keep hearing is seven or twelve. We need to do seven or twelve. Seven or twelve, seven or twelve.
What does that mean?
Hold on. So I think we need to go in and examine there.
I also want to make just one comment. The concept of striking while the iron's hot, I mean, it's not something you can do in a, like, quickly. You know, it's a process that will, and will take time to implement. So it's not like a solution for this year.
Right.
So we all have that understanding.
Okay, so let me clarify what I mean. When I say strike while the iron's hot, Granby has a whole lot of towns around them that they could consider working with. And so we want to make sure we at least get out in front at the same time that perhaps other towns are doing the same thing. So that's what I mean. Like, they're talking now, and so we need to be at the table now. It doesn't mean that we do it. It just means we're at the same conversation with everyone else.
I want to be clear, too, that my understanding of Granby is someone brought it up as a citizen, and they said they would explore it. I don't know that Granby's jumping at the bit. I don't work in Granby. I don't know their, what's going on there, but just because someone brings it up doesn't mean they're jumping at the bit for regionalizing.
Brian, I would agree with you that we need a process, right? And it starts with a committee. And for a committee like this, this one should be a little bit bigger than the average committee, right? School committee members, select board members, some concerned parents.
I think we have to reach out to DESI. There's a process.
Sure.
And there's certain people that have to be on the committee, and there are certain things you have to do even before you discuss them. Meaning, I think, and I'm not the expert, but you have to find a town that's willing to do it first.
Yep.
And then you go through the process.
So the big question then is, is should this reside on a committee built by the school department, or should this be a joint one with the select board? Where's his best sit? Any thoughts?
I'd like to see it be a joint working committee.
I'd like to understand what Brian and Ruby think is best.
I think Brian's thinking about it still.
Yeah, once again, I think we have to follow with DESI and see who needs to be at the table. I don't think it's, you know, the school takes the lead or the town takes the lead. It's a joint, you know, committee. There's certain things we have to do. I think Nicole's right. I think it has to be a joint. My understanding, it takes three to five years to get it up and running.
I'm fine with that. All these big projects take years, you know? It's a good thing they take years, right? You don't want to rush into anything.
For a point of clarification-
Sorry?
For a point of clarification, may I ask a question? Go ahead and finish your thought.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
So those are two different topics, though, consolidation and regionalization. So would this be one working group handling both tasks with very different timelines, or are we talking about two different committees?
That would, that's up for discussion. I think the superintendent earlier this week outlined one consolidation item. I mean, I don't have any more consolidation items we have in town, but-
So I'm going to recommend that we talk to Crystal Dufresne. I've chatted with her, and they're already going through the legwork of reaching out to DESI. They already have a committee that they're forming. That's all underway. Let them do some of the legwork on this so that we don't have to, and then ask them, where do we come in on this? Crystal Dufresne is chair of Granby Select Board. Yeah. So, I mean, maybe they, and they're already working with their council who's guiding them, so I just say we kind of take cues from them and see what they think next steps are before we jump to forming a committee.
I think we should form a committee and listen to what Granby has already found out about the process. I also think that Brian needs to do due diligence and make sure that what he hears is the same thing that what Granby hears, is the same thing that Granby hears.
That makes sense.
Due diligence has to go all around.
If I could just point out, I've also been approached by Palmer. So this isn't a one community and done. So I think the committee is going to look at more of a broader approach to regionalization than just one community.
I've also heard from Palmer.
I mean, I think I might have mentioned this before, like, where I grew up, we had a regional high school, I mean, we had a regional, yes, the high schools were districted. And so each different high school had a specialty. So like, if you were interested in performing arts, let's, I mean, sort of like a charter school concept. I'm not saying we tackle that here. I'm just saying it's an interesting concept for schools to be looking at and DESI to be looking at because, you know, this problem that we're facing here in Belchertown is being faced across the Commonwealth, and it's like, you know, we're partnered with Pathfinder, and then we have to send kids to Smith because they don't offer the same programs, right? Like, there is a way that all these schools can sort of come together and think through the issue as a larger, you know, like, this school, you know, we have music here, like, maybe where our specialty would be music or like, whatever. Just a thought. Not that we should be tackling it, but-
The governor actually came out with a report two years ago because of what Jen's saying, that this issue is being faced across the Commonwealth. We are absolutely not unique and with an eye towards regionalization. And Massachusetts offers state incentives for school districts that pursue regionalization. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later on. But there are some pluses to this. It doesn't mean it's what we do, but it's definitely worth exploring.
So I'm struggling with, how do you make up this committee? Do we defer to Steve Williams, Brian Cameron to come back with, hey, this is a couple of different committee makeups?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ben.
I guess I'm going to reach out to DESI on my part-
Yep.
-and see what advice I get from DESI.
But to Nicole's point, I think also getting feedback from Granby is a good idea. So I don't know if that's something that-
Let me find out how their committee is made up. Steve?
I, sure, if you can.
That could be one data point, for sure, but I do think we need to listen to the Belchert residents within the structure of what Granby's doing.
Once again, I think that DESI is over-seeing this, the committee should be the same.
Yep.
I don't know. So do we want to listen to DESI? Do we want to listen to major schools? Like, how are we going to move on?
Who's guiding us?
I personally would rather listen to DESI first.
Can we do things in tandem? I mean, we can hear from Brian. Nicole can get back to us with what's going on in Granby.
I mean, it feels like we're all, we're, it's like duplicative efforts, you know, like, we need one kind of direction. So in my opinion, we should reach out to DESI, get guidance from DESI, and then go from there.
I don't know. I feel it seems like we're working like a team.
Well, one step is, the superintendent should definitely reach out to DESI. That's, I don't think that's negotiable. Like, that has to happen.
Is there any reason not to form a committee, to go ahead and move to form a committee tonight, and then we can adjust the committee as DESI would recommend if they did? Or the intention to form a committee? Is that like, just kind of what you're saying?
Why is there such a hurry?
I don't know.
Because it's going to take five years.
Okay, we waited this long. Can't we just get some advice and then come back and do it the right way?
I'll try to do it the right way as well. I think, I'll speak for myself, I'm very interested in doing- I'm very interested in doing it the right way. No matter how long it takes. It shouldn't take a decade, though, right? But I do know that nothing happens until we take that first step, which would be you calling DESI.
Okay.
Right? So whether, whether the select board reaches out to other select boards in the area just to help their part understanding of the conversation, totally fine with that. But I don't think we can move forward until you and the school committee call DESI and say, hey, how's this process work?
I think we need someone from DESI to come out and give us a recommendation to all of us in the community. What do we do? And honestly, I think they're probably going to do a feasibility study or something.
Oh, yeah.
Too, so we got to be that in line.
That makes sense to me. How about the board? Do we want to form a committee? Do we want to wait for superintendent to come back?
I'd like to wait. Yeah, I'll defer to the recommendation of superintendent.
Yep.
Sweet.
Very good. So I guess, if you wouldn't mind getting back to us with what DESI says at, at your convenience. Very good. Is that a good stopping point on that topic tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on. H, Proposition Two and a Half Dead Exclusion Study Planning Committee. Actually, can I have that paper on that? Yes, thank you. Ten people sign up. So this part of the public comment period, the, we have ten speakers lined up, two minutes apiece, to talk about the, the topic of the Proposition Two and a Half Dead Exclusion Study Planning Committee formation. This is, this is where we get to listen to our residents here at this meeting. So I'm going to have a...
I have a question before you start. If there's anybody online that wanted to speak, but they didn't have the opportunity to sign that paper, are we going to allow for that?
I don't know if we can.
Just curious.
All right, so two minutes. First name on the list is Cheryl Dutton of Ledgewood Drive in Belchertown. So Cheryl, if you don't mind, when there's two minutes, I'm going to...
Hopefully, I won't even take that long. I am here realizing that this, this meeting tonight is about your decision to form a committee to explore the two and a half, Proposition Two and a Half Dead Override. I'm urging you to continue being the pragmatic board that you have been in looking at all alternatives, all departments that are needing money. I personally feel it should be on the ballot. I will vote for an override to support the schools, but I will also vote for one to support our grant, current grant-funded fire department and other town departments. The schools are vital. There's no question about that, and it is ours responsibility to fund the proper education for the future leaders of our town. But we don't want any of their houses burning down and nobody going to put the fire out either. So I'm, I just want to be sure that the entire budget is included in the discussion for this committee. And if it is your decision to put a Proposition Two and a Half Override on the ballot, I am urging you to have it be one vote. We are one town, and we need to unite around that. The '90s Proposition Two and a Half was broken up into departments, and it served to divide a great part of town. I would like you to consider making it be one vote. And I'd also like you to consider having the next meeting regarding the Proposition Two and a Half Override at the high school or Chestnut Hill for the safety of the attendees at the meeting. Because once again, all means of progress are blocked.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jake Holsberg of Overlook Drive.
I'm not yelling at you. I just want people to hear me, but I hope that doesn't come off the wrong way. Thank you very much for being here today. I'm a dad with two kids who attend Belchertown Schools, and I've been working in education for 17 years. I'm not sure if people realize just how hard it is to build a thriving school community with high-performing academics, incredible arts and music program, and amazing athletic team. I don't think they realize how important stability and consistency is to those communities. Because behind-the-scenes teachers, coaches, parents, admin, they're the glue that's holding it together. And maybe your kid struggled in ELA in first grade, but by the time they got to second grade, that teacher was able to tell that second-grade teacher how they worked and how to help them. Building those relationships takes a really long time, where people trust each other, share ideas, and actually listen to each other. And they may be telling each other things that they don't want to hear at first. That takes a lot of time. If we go through with another round of these massive cuts, that school community that gets built, we won't have that anymore. It'll set our district back years. By cutting 22 people, $2.1 million, potentially closing a school, reconfiguring grades across different buildings in a matter of months, that is going to create chaos. That is not how something like this should be done. That work should be thoughtful, well-planned, done collaboratively, with community input at every step. In our town, over the last 20 years, the share of the budget spent on education has shrunk from 65% to 53%. Other town departments have seen funding increases outpacing inflation. That's not called belt tightening. It's a fundamental shift in our priorities away from school. If, we are one of the worst districts when it comes to per-people spending in the state of Massachusetts. On average, $4,000 less per pupil than surrounding towns. Is that really who we are? If our kids could vote, what would they tell us about that? Level fund our schools, provide the same programs and services as last year, then create a multi-board committee whose task will determine what the long-term future will look like with input from the community. Just real quick, I've calculated the override cost. The average household tax bill will be a dollar and one cent. If there isn't a solution to level fund the schools, give us a chance to decide if our taxes should go up in order to save our schools.
Thank you. Thank you. I got a Maggie Chen.
Last year, when I was in third grade, we had specials every day of the week. Everyone looks forward to specials like music, art, library, and gym. This year, because the schools were not fully funded, they had to cut one special. I really miss having that time during the day to get up and run around in gym. If the schools can't get the money they need for next year, what else are they going to cut? My older brothers all got to play in the band, run track, and do after-school clubs. Will those things even be there for me when I get older? Please find a way to keep these parts of school that we love so much.
Holly Field from Warner Street.
Proposition Two and a Half Tax Increase Act never intended to imply that communities exceeding the limit are overspending. In fact, it gives taxpayers the authority to decide whether additional taxes should be raised in a given year by allowing for an override vote. This is especially important when inflation is higher than the tax increase cap outlined in the original Proposition Two and a Half. Just this fiscal year, many communities across Massachusetts have come up against the same town revenue problem, and 21 have solved it with an override vote. An override results in a permanent increase in the levy limit for all the departments that need it. It is a long-term solution. Belchertown voted for a Proposition Two and a Half Override in 1993 to add funds for the school and public safety. Thanks to our select board and town members, we have been fiscally responsible enough to not have to need another override until now, 30 years later. This is not a measure to take lightly, but one that needs to be done now in order to balance our revenue and expenditures in our current fiscal landscape. Thank you.
I'm going to skip over to Peter Chen from Warner Street as well.
I'm getting a lot of the Warner Street crew. Hi, thanks very much for your time. I'm going to try to do this as short as possible. I want to echo what I think Cheryl said at the beginning about listening to the town members that are here and watching all of us here coming out in a group as a community to urge you to let us have a decision in how we move forward. And I want to urge you to look at us and know that we are willing to go to our neighbors, to talk to us, to make sure that we're all aware of what we're asking for and how we move forward. What we're asking you to do is give us the ability to make that decision and give you and empower you to be able to make that for us. Thank you.
Maria. Skador. I was close. Sam, you didn't, you didn't put your address down here? Yeah. You didn't put your address down here? Thank you.
It's evident that the time has come for the town of Belchertown to implement a Two and a Half Override to address the operational and fixed budget costs which are the root of our funding gaps. It is not shameful. General Law 59 clearly states, "The purpose of an override is to provide funding for municipal expenses likely to recur or continue into the future, such as annual operating costs and fixed costs, although it may be used for any municipal spending purpose." An override for the purpose of maintaining an operating budget is built in the law. Putting an override on the ballot, although it may be unpopular with some citizens, is not a failure. It is a demonstration of facing a difficult situation head-on with real leadership. We clearly have a growing gap between money coming in and money needed to maintain all town services. The gap gets larger each year. There's no immediate external sources of funds to fill it. At recent tri-board meetings, we have listened and boards have discussed this fact, emphasizing the impact of increasing fixed costs, then shrugging their shoulders while saying, "We love our schools. It is what it is." And the only response to the question, "What will we do next year?", is a hope that the state will change our funding equation. Highly unlikely. The state's recurrent budget goes beyond its impact on schools. It is a town-wide issue. Like it or not, we are a town in crisis, and how we respond will set the tone for the next decade. Going forward, a strategy for success must include providing adequate funding for all town services and projects. The fact is that regardless of Granby's efforts, businesses and new residents will not come to a town which cuts its services by $2 to $3 million every year. If we choose to take no action to fill this gap, we are going to fundamentally change our community, and not only will we have reduced town services, but we will be watching our money literally walking out the door as people choice out to other schools. I see elected leadership, you have an obligation to be honest with yourselves and this community regarding our economic future. We are relying on you to provide the leadership that is here before there's little left for Belchertown to brand.
Thank you. Next up is Crystal Dupree. Evern F.
Hi, I'm Crystal Dupree. I am a mom of two kids in the district and an educator, and I've been doing a lot of volunteer work in the community. And I wanted to kind of piggyback off of the idea that the surrounding communities have greater per-pupil expenditures than we do, because I was curious about, not only that, but what are the data like with the taxes in those areas? Right? And what I found was that not only are we one, we are the lowest of the pure-pupil expenditures, we're also one of the lowest tax percentages as well of all of those surrounding communities. Now, I came into Belchertown 10 years ago with this expectation of paying higher taxes because that was the reputation factor, you know, and great schools, great community, all of that stuff, right? And so I kept that, I kept that perspective. And I realized, doing this extra research here, that it's actually not the case. We, we're one of the lowest of single-family, um, single-family property tax percentages of income of our surrounding community. So there is room. There's room. You know, they are having problems there, um, their, their towns' budgets as well, but we're in worship, right? So, yeah, prop, two and a half. Let's do it!
How about Casey Kimmy?
All right, hi, everyone. A lot of you have heard me speak before. I'm a teacher for Switzer Elementary School, physical education teacher. But I would really like everyone to also know, I am a lifelong resident of Belchertown. I am a product of Belchertown Public Schools K to 12. I always knew that I wanted to raise a family here because I had the best childhood here. I lived in a safe community. I had access to tons of extracurriculars, and my education was top-notch. I knew it as soon as I sat in my first college class and realized that I was way better prepared than all the frantic kids sitting next to me. I didn't want to waste time searching for something I already knew I had here in Belchertown, a perfect place to call home, and with an educated mind that told me, "Small town doesn't equate to small-minded." Here's the thing, Belchertown educators can only do so much with so little before we're forced to leave and pour our talents into other districts that choose to invest in education. As someone on the inside of our schools, it's embarrassing to me to watch good teachers leave to rival towns. And what's even more embarrassing is when I sit on the hiring committees of those positions, nobody serious even applies, and if they do, they turn down the job as soon as they see the pay or the lack of resources they need to do their job. I'm here to protect my kids and everyone else's kids. We spend, what we spend our money on is directly related to what we value. Don't you love driving down Safe Street and seeing all the kids play sports on both sides of the road? We love seeing the kids in the dirty uniforms waiting in line at Chubbies after the game, and the nostalgia that I know we all feel when all those kids are walking up that gigantic hill to go to the Belchertown Fair Friday after school. I could go on all day about these things that make our town special, but all those things involve kids, and all those things are starting to disappear before your very eyes as families and teachers are seeking better opportunities elsewhere. My last plea to you is this: We don't talk in this town, travel, press. And all of us have been able to see the rising tensions between the school committee, between the select board, the finance committee. There's been a lot of tension. And all I ask is that you don't let that friction with each other ruin my daughter's education before she's even stepped into kindergarten. If I seem really upset, it's because this is something I'm very passionate about. I've spoken about how passionate I am, and even more so when it involves my own kids. You all in charge, school committee, finance committee, the select board, you could all win the lottery tomorrow, and I hope you do. Hey, but it, it leave it, but my girls will be the one paying for this in the long run. And I know an override is not a permanent solution. It's a permanent solution. It's a Band-Aid to help us stay alive until we find a better financial plan. You should absolutely be refusing to let Belchertown be known as a poor school system. That's not what we are. We never have been. We've been leaders in education, and that's falling. So it should go against every fiber in your body to let that happen. Put it on the ballot and let us show up for our kids.
Who here did this happen years ago from South Hasley? And the reason why? Because I have a seven-year-old daughter and a school sister now, and we're very proud to be Belchertown residents. Ultimately, this is about the kids. This isn't party lines, this isn't one board versus the other. I would employ both sides, the select board, Mr. Cameron, the school committee, get together, educate everybody, knowledge is power, right? We're all here to help solve a problem. Now, if there is a short-term solution to do that that's going to benefit our kids, my kids, I'm all for it. I'd like to understand what the repercussions of that have been small, about that easy fix it, and the two and a half, and I want to know the long-term repercussions of that. Because nothing's free in this room, so we're going to pay for something somehow, some way, at some point. But at the end of the day, this is about the kids. We have to protect our kids. I'm a public school guy until I'm not. As soon as I'm not, other people are going to leave this town too. We want to turn that around. We want to make sure that we're inviting people back into this town who attend this school that is, 10 years ago was one of the thousand in the region. We start leaving, the school system and the town as well. The school is the crown jewel. Let's protect it. This is about the kids. There's only one winner, and there's one who is the kid. I'll say it again, the kid. I strongly urge you guys to get together, figure this out. You guys are smart. You guys have a great select board, we have a great school committee, a lot of brainpower there, a lot of thought leadership. We can figure this out. Thank you.
First and foremost, I want to thank you for your service. I know firsthand the significant time commitment and added stress that comes with your roles, especially during a time of difficult budget cycle. Your dedication is appreciated by the community. As I understand it, municipalities have limited resources for revenue. Chapter 70, property taxes and local receipts such as excise, meals taxes and fees. While I agree chapter 70 funding is inadequate, there is little we can do to change this in the short term. We can hope for adjustments to the funding formula in the future, but hope is not a strategy. Since excise and meals tax rates are set by the state, our ability to generate meaningful revenue from these sources in the near term is limited. This leaves property taxes as the only immediate option. Proposition two and a half enacted in the 80s was designed to provide checks and balances on municipal budgets. It does not imply that exceeding the two and a half percent limit is reckless. Rather, it ensures that budgets are efficiently managed before turning to the taxpayers for additional support. As we all know, the majority of both town and school budgets are allocated to personnel. Annual contractual increases typically hover around 2%, with step increases, lane changes, and other factors, costs quickly surpass the two and a half percent threshold. Add rising health insurance expenses, transportation costs, vocational tuition, and it becomes clear that two and a half percent increase is simply not enough. Staying within the proposition two and a half limit is not living within our means. It's imposing an arbitrary cap at a time when course correction is necessary. If we do nothing, I believe property values will decline, families will opt for school choice at a cost to the town, or move away altogether, as to what a cost to the town. We are on the cusp of a downward spiral that will be difficult to reverse. I urge the select board to consider a short-term solution that allows us to plan responsibly for the long term. There is no other viable short-term fix. Chapter 70 funding will solve this issue in the near future. Branding Belchertown won't provide immediate relief. A cultural district and a bike path while valuable are not immediate financial solutions. I truly support creative, long-term strategies to strengthen our revenue base.
Ruby? Just need clarification. Are you speaking as a parent or a school committee?
I'm speaking as a parent.
Thank you.
But if we allow the ship to sink in the meantime, none of those future plans will matter. Only you can stop the ship.
Is there any additional speaker that feels like they haven't been heard? I remember this young man. He spoke at Brian's press conference. Could you please state your name and your street address?
Zachary Wall, Springfield Road. I spoke at the school committee meeting last Tuesday.
We saw you.
Um, I'm, my brother, we're all really concerned for what's going on right now. People have been coming up to me all day saying, "Oh, two and a half overrides are more of an adult thing, you shouldn't talk," but it really does affect us in the long run. Well, the short run and the long run. But like, it does affect us. It's our teachers that we're talking about. I know that my brother, Nicholas Wall, he's a student at Jabe, I mean, sorry, Chestnut Hill, he used to love having specials every single day, and now he has no specials on Friday because of the cuts that have been happening. I feel like most of the people in this room are willing to pay an extra couple bucks for the two and a half override, but like, it really, really does affect us, the students, the teachers, the admins, everyone, the Belchertown community. It affects everyone in the long run. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Gordon from Turkey Hill Road. I am not a lifelong Belchertown resident. My husband and I moved here three and a half years ago. We were born and raised in Springfield, so I can speak to poor educational systems. And we moved here because I had stepsisters who went through the K-12, and we knew that Belchertown education system was what we wanted for our children. My six-year-old daughter over there is in first grade and loves school. I'm sorry, I'm emotional. And I have a seven-month-old that I want to stay here with, but realistically, we tried really hard and we saved for a long time to move here. And we've lived here for three and a half years, and if the education system starts to take a downturn that we've seen firsthand in Springfield and in places like Chickaby, we're going to be one of those families that's going to leave. And it's in the near future that that's a possibility. So I think I represent a lot of the younger families in town that are nervous that the reasons that we are here, that we are participating, we are volunteering, we are trying to take part is for our children. And there are a lot of us that are thinking about separating and leaving, and that's a big blow, I think, to Belchertown. I helped coach kindergarten and soccer. I hope to help coach more. I hope to help, you know, whenever possible, you know, given our situation, but I'm here to talk about the children as well, just like I believe the gentleman over there did. It's the kids. We moved here for our children. We want to stay here for our children. And if it comes down to it, unfortunately, we will be a family that leaves for our children.
You are the last speaker, young man. Wait, 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 wait. Please say your name and your street.
All right, so William NATO, Carol Land Drive. I don't have a ton to say, and I definitely don't have as good of vocabulary as that does, but like, so I have to, like, I wish I had, like, PE twice a week like I did last year. All my friends have to, like, I know a ton of friends that want to have PE twice a week. And it's like, I wish I could, because I need to get energy out a lot of the time. And, yeah, that's just kind of it. Thank you.
All right, public comment is now closed, and we hope that the crowd, we hope that the crowd here lets this board deliberate without interruption. That's our hope. We don't want to, you know, carry this over to the next meeting, right? So why don't we start off with, you know, how this came to be, right? Looking at planning, forming a two and a half and debt exclusion study planning committee. So there's no secret, the school department unveiled their budget increase this year, which was surprisingly large from my perspective. You know, we don't know exactly, you know, what caused the large increase compared to other departments in town. We want to figure it out. We want to work with the school department to figure out, you know, what exactly happened. And that's part of the reason why we need to take a serious look at this, because it's not just the school committee, it's the town departments. And on top of the town departments, you're also talking about borrowing. We have a pretty crumbling infrastructure in town, meaning the buildings, right? So when you look at all these in totality, the school budget, the other 13 department budgets, the capital overlays, which we finally had a committee come live this year, this all increases the bottom-line taxes. Some of them are permanent, some of them are not, but, you know, it's my view that the town needs to take a serious look at this stuff, and that's why we're talking about it tonight as a group. I've got more to say, but I'd like to open up to the board to get their thoughts. Maybe Jen, you want to go first?
I joined the board, and I quickly realized that we had a fiscal cliff that we were facing. I joined the board six years ago. What I learned was we were engaging in a lot of bad financial practices from the previous administration, unfortunately. We were taking money from our stabilization fund, we were putting all of our free cash back into our operating budget, which made it seem like we were doing fine, not a problem. Once we realized that there was a serious issue, we had the Division of Local Services come in and take a look, and they clearly articulated what the problem was, that our revenues were not keeping up with our increasing expenses. They offered us some specific solutions that we could take a look at. There are 10 recommendations in this report. If you've not read it, it is available on our website. When we had the opportunity to start addressing that, when our administration turned over, we started taking this a little bit more seriously. And so we decided as a finance committee that we were going to stop engaging in these bad practices and start to slowly chip away at what was going on previously. This is part of what has come to a head, unfortunately, in a time of rising inflation, things happening at the federal level that are going to obviously impact everyone in our community. So we have a serious choice in front of us. We are working diligently at the town level to try to think outside the box and creatively about how we can address these situations. We know we have an economic development problem. We have a lot of developable land that we have not been marketing, which is part of the reasons why you might have heard about branding re-efforts. We're planting those seeds now. We know they're not going to pay off for a while. So I think at this point, I'm interested in how a two and a half would work. So I want to hear some more about that, and maybe other people want to speak first.
Well, how a two and a half override would work?
Well, how it would work for this year? Like, what does that look like? What does that process look like for the town?
Sure. What if we hear from everybody else first?
Yep.
Any Belchertown initial comments? Lisa? Wendy Nicole?
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to speak for a second. I am one of the newest board members. I'll just share that, I think many of you know that I do have children in the schools. I have both a kindergartner and a second grader, but I'll set that aside and I'll talk about my role also as a select board member. I think Jen said very eloquently, the work that is being done in the town, and I do believe that these are going to be fruitful seeds. I don't think this is going to solve our current problems in a timely manner. I also do understand that it's not just the schools. All of our departments are hurting. I have a tendency to speak in metaphors. It's one of my tricks, but I heard people say this is like a Band-Aid. I don't know if an override is a Band-Aid. I actually think it might be more of a tourniquet. And what I'm thinking in that sense is that if we were to apply a tourniquet, you wouldn't just walk away from your bleeding patient, you'd stop and analyze what's going on. So if we do choose to put forward, the select board just puts forward the question, the question's put forward, it goes to the town to vote on this. And I think, as we know from recent votes, there's a lot of calling out that would have to happen for everyone to be on board, but then even if that were to pass, we need to find out what is the bleed? What can we do to move forward? Inflation's not changing. Fiscal 26 is already anticipated at 2.9, but who knows? And we do have a lot to do. So keep planting the seeds we're planting, look at the opportunity possibly for an override, and keep doing strategic and smart work to make us all healthy in the future.
I can go next. So I've heard a lot about cuts to the school budget, right? Couple things. Now, here's the school budget. This is fresh from the town council office, going back to 15. I don't see any cuts. I don't see any budget reductions. That's part A. Point two is that what people in here need to understand is, is that the select board has zero authority over what the school superintendent and school committee decide to enhance, cut, remove, add, any of that stuff. And that's Mass General Law Chapter 71, and that's the reason for it. So we have no say over what it is that they're trying to do. Steve, I'm pretty sure that'll be on the website, right?
It can be.
It can be. The other part of the equation is, is that the residents and taxpayers of Belchertown, especially over the last 10 years or probably even longer, we've had our tax levy maximized every year. There's nothing left on the table. Like, the tax levy was raised the maximum allowed by law. And then the last part is, is because the select board has no transparency into the school budget, and just in the other facts I recommended, I don't think we should recommend it to an F override and put that burden on the taxpayers until this group, and the public for that matter, has a line item budget. Tell it to us. I've been at this 11 years. I've never seen a line item budget from the school department, not even once. I think in order to work together, we need that level of transparency. And because it's such a big question, it's not just the schools, folks. It's been talked about a lot tonight. Steve Williams is making cuts on the town side. We have debt exclusion items. There's a lot of taxation going around. So the purpose I want to form this committee is to take a solid look at all the issues, come up with a borrowing schedule, come up with the override schedule, come up with all of it. I'm more worried about Belchertown for the next 50 years. I understand other folks want to worry about Belchertown today. I do too, but the reality is the school budgets have never been cut, and I think it's important. And I think it's important that, um, uh, that they go back and work with us on that line item transparency. Which part, ma'am?
It's not correct, in that it doesn't take into account the cost of average spending required to be in this district and run the school. And so just because the actual number is not another by not proportionally, the amount of money that's being spent on the schools and on the things that the school needs is not proportionally a thing. Those proportions have been changed. And that is why the per pupil expenditure is a better measure than the law. So those bond numbers are misleading.
Yeah, thank you for the thoughts. I appreciate it. So, uh, Lisa Nicole, anything ahead of these?
I'm happy to jump in. Um. You know, the Belcher Town voters already rejected the junior high, demonstrating clear concerns about the financial burden on taxpayers. Now, the school di- district is seeking a two point five million, seeking two point five million through a prop two and a half override, which would permanently raise taxes without addressing the town's structural budget challenges. While it may provide short-term relief, it does not solve the larger issues of declining enrollment, rising costs, and long-term financial sustainability. As we know, Belcher Town demographics are shifting. Our population of retirees and fixed income residents is growing, while our student enrollment continues to decline, which is a trend seen throughout Western Massachusetts and beyond. Raising property taxes further will only make it harder for seniors to stay in their home and may discourage young families from moving to Belcher Town because the taxes are too high. We need to be strategic and responsible with our town's financial planning. This is about fiscal responsibility, not opposition to public education. The debate over the override isn't about whether or not we support education itself. It's about how we fund education responsibly. We know buildings don't educate students. Teachers do. A sustainable school system means ensuring that we invest in staff, curriculum, and student programs, not just in higher taxes that make our town unaffordable. A tax increase that doesn't address the root causes of our, of our financial struggles is not a solution. It is a temporary fix that, that delays the inevitable need for real change. So exploring regionalization and school consolidation, both buildings, not people, um, is at least a starting point. Because the suggested cuts that were put forward by the school superintendent and the school committee, I think, um, rightly frightened, um, a, a lot of parents, teachers, and students. Uh, so I am much more interested in making sure that teachers are funded and that after-school programs stay in place and s- schools, sports, and student clubs stay in place. Um, and, and, and instead, look at, um, getting rid of or consolidating buildings, because it's the people that matter. It's the education of the students that matter. The buildings don't, they, they take second place to that, is what I'm saying. If I were a parent, or if I were a teacher, or if I were the student, when I hear this, hear what everyone has said tonight, I agree. I agree. We don't want to cut. And so it is the school committee and the superintendent that, uh, that people need to go to and say, you know, I don't like these suggested cuts. Let's look at this line item by line item, so that we don't have to cut s- school sports, that we don't have to cut extracurricular programming and the like, and give our students the best education possible, hos- possible, while respecting town taxpayers at the same time.
Thank you. So, uh, just getting back to finish up my original thoughts. You know, I've been asked about what is?
I thought you were done. I'm so sorry to interrupt. Sorry.
Um, I've been asked, you know. One second. Um, so, you know, what is the plan going forward, right? You know, financially speaking, we need to continually fully implementing the DLS report from twenty twenty-one. It's on the website. We've got an upcoming DLS twenty twenty-five report too, that we need help with. Uh, we need to get our financial footing back to, uh, Jen Turner's comments earlier. Uh, we need to fully explore and implement a shared services approach between the town and school departments to help make the operating budget more efficient. Uh, and we need to continue with the forward-looking efforts such as the Creative Economy Committee. You know, I've heard different people say, hey, we don't need that. Well, you kinda do need that. It's just gonna take time, right? We gotta be working, uh, now and in the future. And then lastly, the whole reason for this discussion is to take a hard look at the results of a proposition two and a half override and debt exclusion committee. To do that, the school department should be willing to provide line item budgets for the past five, uh, closed fiscal years. Any department, whether the school department, the police department, any department that is asking to reach even further into taxpayers' pockets needs to be transparent as to why and rationalize how it got to that point in the first place. I'm not picking on the school department. I do the same thing for the police and the fire. It's, uh, you know, if you're gonna ask the taxpayer for more money permanently, I'd like to know why and how. Uh, and so with results of that committee, uh, select board needs to evaluate the entirety of the operating budget and desperately need capital improvements, uh, with the associated responsible borrowing schedules. Because it's gonna, it's gonna jump up the taxes quite a bit, right? So for those of you that are wondering, like, why are our taxes, uh, they seem to be low compared to the surrounding region? Because we haven't addressed any of this stuff. Once we do, you'll see that our taxes are not exactly gonna be low anymore, right? And we want to, and we wanna make sure that we're doing it in a responsible fashion. That's why I want this select board specifically to, let's, let's take a good hard look at these questions, right? Those are my thoughts. Oh, anything you wanna add?
Yeah, um, so I don't really have my thoughts well planned out, because I'm just, my mind just keeps going back and forth, back and forth. Like Casey, I was raised in Belcher Town. I'm also a product of K through twelve in Belcher Town and can't say enough about the quality of the education that I got. However, it is so hard for me to go to, remember everybody, fifty percent of the community is over the age of fifty. Excuse me. Fifty percent of the community is over the age of fifty, and I have to think about them too. Until, to Ed's point, until I can see line for line where you're coming up short at two point one million dollars, I feel like I can't make, let me finish my thought. I feel like I can't make an educated decision. Also, of those seventeen positions, why am I hearing all over Facebook that these are all teachers? Why are we even looking at teachers? What about school administration? Where's our assistant superintendent? Why aren't we looking at him? Why aren't we looking outside of the teachers for this? I need to see line by line before I personally can make an educated decision on whether I'm gonna vote to put this on the warrant or not.
Superintendent Cameron, you wanna make a, of course.
Certainly, this isn't the venue to do this. But for the last five years, you've gotten a line item budget from me every budget season. When we meet with select board, finance, you have a hard copy. They're on the website. None of you have asked me for a line item budget this year except one parent. And our business manager was sick and he's working on it. So to say that, Ed, in eleven years, you've never got a line budget item, that, that's shocking to me. And for every year I've been superintendent, we have cut level service position. And all of you in the finance committee have said, we understand the cuts. It is what it is. So to say you never got a line item budget isn't fair. And to say that the school, but you had students speak up here that said, that said, we don't get phys ed anymore. Where did that staff person go? And I don't know where you're getting your information, Nicole. No one ever said they were all teachers. We have looked at teachers, paras, custodians, food service, administrator. So I don't know where that's coming from, but I think this is kinda funny that it, it's like, we didn't know about this cut. Two point one million dollars? We have seventy percent of the population that works in Belcher Town. Six hundred and thirty-eight thousand was health insurance. The other was special education. Smith vote. We pay that directly from our budget. It doesn't come off the top. Let's start taking that off the top. By law, we're guaranteed we have to do that. So don't, I, I, I find it very disheartening, the, the comments tonight, like, you didn't know the schools were gonna have this big of a cut. It was one point seven last year. And you said to me, it's gonna be worse next year. So maybe I missed something, but I, I, I'm just, I'm just beside myself.
So the question remains before the committee. How's, uh, how's the committee feel about forming, uh, how's the board feel about forming a proposition two and a half override and debt exclusion committee?
I would like to know how it would work if we did it this year. And if we were able to put together a group of folks to look at it for our next meeting. To come up with a number.
Is this gonna be a working committee that has select board, FinCom, school committee, and residents? That?
It should.
That's what I would wanna see, is an actual working committee?
It's a big question. I don't think we can answer that question by the next meeting. It's too large of a question.
I, I hear you. I would like to put forth to the community, because I feel like it's the best democratic process, to figure out some number that's agreeable, as Cheryl mentioned, between the town and the schools, to put on a ballot. Because this divisiveness is not helping our community in any way, shape, or form.
Brian, when do you think the, um, business manager will have your line by line item budget done for? Is he back to work?
Is, if I just have a question? What are you hoping to change?
Change?
Yeah.
Just wanna evaluate. You've had complete lack of transparency.
Lack of transparency?
A line item. Line item, yes. So this is. You hand me the five major categories.
No, I don't. You might wanna go back and check, because I give you about a forty-page packet, and it's a line item, line by line by line by line by line.
Have you given that to me? I know it's my first year, but I just.
Because what we are doing is usually we give it after the cut, and then we have a parent that wants to see it. I'll give it to everybody, because sure, it's not a big season.
I wasn't asking about the five years. I was asking about FY twenty-six. That line by line budget will be done tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
And please look at health insurance. It is a big thing. Smith vote. Special transportation. And then, uh, we'll see the conversation.
I just think we could come up with a number to present to the community. I don't know who needs to be involved in that conversation. Obviously, the two of you.
Well, it needs to be more than just me. That's why I think we're having this conversation to talk about a committee.
What do you mean a number? Like, the amount?
So if, so if we put this on the ballot, it needs to have a number. It's a dollar.
The dollar value.
The dollar.
Are you talking about putting prop two and a half on the ballot this year?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
I know, but that's not what we are here to talk.
I understand this long. Yes, Lisa. I understand, I understand all of that, but I feel like at this point, I don't wanna punish the entire town because of the bad financial practices that we've accustomed to.
Then I have to agree with you exactly. I have to agree exactly on that point.
So I think that the only thing that's fair is for us to come up with a number and then for all of you to organize that information to the community, but it has to be real information. So, um, I, I forget your name. I'm sorry, Holsberg. A lot of your information is wrong, just off the bat. Like, I, I appreciate all of the work that you put into it, but there is, I did my own analysis between twenty twenty and twenty-six. The department percentages are flat from each department and the schools. And I can sit down with you and can have a conversation about that. But the information is available. And this stuff is not easy. Like, I am a financial professional. I work with numbers. I work with data. The data tells a story, and it can be twisted to any kind of narrative that you wanna put forward. So it needs to be correct, right? So the information needs to be correct. And if it's presented to the community and it's organized, and I think the other two pieces is if you're organizing, you should take this to the state, because we can do the Chapter seventy organizing and then their QUAB and legislation that is out there right now to help our communities in the watershed of the QUAB. So there's opportunities here to address all of this in tandem. Um. But if we need a number for this year and to put that number out there to the community, then it needs to be right, and the data needs to be correct. The per pupil expenditure, for example, which is another data point that a lot of you were pointing to. The town of Granby has two buildings. We have six. It's true. We have more capital that is part of that number. So we have to really be looking apples to apples. Some of the other communities, they have a lot more commercial tax rate. Like, we don't have a lot of businesses here. We don't have a lot of businesses here. Yes, I, I, yes. And, and we have been trying to fix that. Believe you me, we know we have the state school property. We have the EDIC that's been working on that project for decades, right? We, as a community, need to understand what economic development is. What are the things that are gonna help drive economic development? They are not just new houses with a negative number. What is the number that you said at the last meeting that we had? For every house that we build is what, six thousand dollars in taxes? If there's a child in there, seventeen thousand dollars goes out. It's already a net loss.
So the, um, average tax bill in Belcher Town is based on a approximately four hundred and thirty thousand dollar assessment. And the tax bill's approximately six thousand dollars. So, and our tax rate is fourteen dollars and fifty-one cents a thousand. So for every million dollars of development, we realize fourteen thousand, five hundred and ten dollars of taxation. So how many millions of dollars? There must be a math teacher in this room somewhere, but how many millions of dollars of development do we need to raise, uh, two point one or two point five million dollars? It's a, it's a big number. And that's why when we talk about what, what is our plan, uh, our plans are long-term. There's, there's not a, a magic, um, formula out there to raise this money, um, through business development, short term.
I looked at some of that information, and I think I have the same information through Desi and through the town's.
Yep, I looked too.
So is that information, are you saying incorrect too?
So the things that I think are not factored into those calculations is all of the fixed, I mean, sorry, not fixed. The restricted assets that we have. We have revolving funds in those numbers. We have grants in those numbers. We have, um, We have cherry sheet offshits. Like, there's all sorts of things that need to be taken out and stripped out to look at the actual cost per department. And when you do that, the numbers are flat. Department to department to department. Yeah, so, you know, there's balance sheets, there's profit... I mean, they all work together, right? You know, it's like, and then the stabilization, I think folks need to understand. If we take all that money out, we have no borrowing capacity at all. We can't, we have our credit in the toilet. We can't do anything, so...
And just to that point, and this has been probably nasty. But are the town budget line items on the town website broken down by line item?
No, but we can...
Because I think that's a fair question. If you're asking us to do it, which we do it anyway.
We get the town budgets every month. The finance committee gets them every month.
No, no, line item.
Yes.
Yeah, we get line items. We do, we do.
I don't say them. I don't know if people are here to see them. But all I'm asking is, yeah, just as a conversation, what do we think? Okay, so I went to DSE. DSE does all schools in the state. We do it the same way, and we came up with that. You know what I'm saying? So I'm just trying to meet you at, meet you at, I'll be at W just so I can understand as well. Because I certainly don't want to portray inaccurate information.
Yeah, right.
And I also got a data guy, that's all he does. So let's meet together.
Yeah.
Agreed.
I just don't think we can pull things out just...
Right.
Brian, I just want to say that for people who, like me, who are listening, because you're not at the mic, we're not hearing half of what you're saying.
You have to use the microphone.
It sounds like, it sounds like the superintendent agrees that we need to take a look at this issue.
I think we need a line item per department, per town, to compare apples to apples. Because I know on the pie chart, it says fixed costs. What are those costs?
Yeah, those are, yeah, and those are pensions, insurances for all the buildings in the town.
Not the school, though.
Yes.
Including...
No, we pay for our own...
No, you don't pay directly for your building insurance, your property and casualty insurance.
Oh, you're talking about that?
Yes.
I'm talking about staff.
Right, but that's in the fixed costs. So if you use that as a percentage on the general government budgets, then it skews the results.
Well, let's break that down, so we're all talking about the same apple pie.
Correct.
I agree.
I guess the question that I have is, when we talk about percentages of spending, the pie chart and the breakdown, what relevance does that have when we're trying to solve an FY '26 budget problem? Because I think we need to focus on the budgets and not the pie chart. Because if you want to get distracted and argue about a pie chart for the next six months, you know, let's focus on the real issue.
I totally agree, but that was the Facebook website. Schools take $34 million. And that's not true, but let's break it down. Because as you saw on that pie chart, all the town departments are broken out. And then you lump education as one. And I'm not saying it's wrong, but Pathfinders in there? Let's call it education. Let's not call it Belcher Town Public School expenses. I don't pay for that. You know, and once again, you don't give us that much money. The state gives us 14 million. So you can't take credit for that. And I think that was my problem when I saw that, is I had people saying, how can you ask us to support the schools when the town gives you 34 million? That's not true.
Right.
It is true, but it's not true.
And that's, that's a narrative that needs to change, because the pie chart represents spending, not necessarily what the town gives you. It's a revenue, right?
Exactly.
And it's all revenue.
But for the people that don't understand it, that should be broken down. One side's completely broken down, the other side, just one big lump.
So my concern is, we're talking about a committee. If we're going to be looking at budgets, we need to focus on the budgets. Because I don't want to spend my time working on a pie chart.
I agree with you, but I...
We have, we're down, May 12th is town meeting.
I understand, but I don't want to focus on that. You didn't know that this was going to be a big hit to the schools. Each and every one of you knew, and the finance committee knew.
And the town.
That this was going to be a big hit.
But, and the town, right? The town also has a shortfall.
Correct. But when you have the biggest population of 70%, you're going to see bigger hits.
Absolutely, right.
But at the same time, the DLS report in 2021 said this was going to happen. So everyone knew about this four years ago.
Yeah, four years. What have we done? Four years ago, what have we done? Because we're in the same spot.
There wasn't a plan put in place.
What is the plan?
No, 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 sorry, sorry. So I just, again, this thing about the plan, we had reports, so COVID for our town was almost like a blessing because of the rescue plan money that we received, okay? I just want to make that really clear. We took a modest investment out of that pocket of money, $175,000, to invest in marketing our town and changing the perception to the outside community to develop here in Belcher Town. That is an ongoing effort. It's going to take time, okay? I just want to also mention, Brian, I was there for you and the schools. I fought for equity out of that money, for COVID relief money. We gave you money for security system. We invested in all parts of the town because we are one town, okay? This economic development challenge that we have here in town is not an easy fix. I'm sure a lot of you feel it. You go out, why do I want to drive all the way to Belcher Town? There's nothing to do there. There's tourism here. There are things like the Disc Golf Course. There are things like our brand-new Lake Wallace Trail that was mostly built with grant funding. There is the QUAB. There is Jessica's Playground, which is an accessible playground. It's one of the earliest ones that we had that was built by volunteers in this town. We have a lot of things that are happening here. So we're focused on tourism, destination, bringing in other businesses. We have been successful. We're all here today when we signed the Victrolis License for a Mexican restaurant. How many of you thought that was going to happen? I sure didn't. I've been trying to get a coffee shop to locate here for 15 years, okay? This is what's going on. We have to be able to invest in ourselves as a community. So again, I'll stop talking. Sorry, I get very passionate, and I apologize.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that you did support that. I hear you honestly.
So...
Brian, I supported it too.
Yes, you have.
I wasn't here, so sorry.
No, we weren't here. Can we call back to the question?
Yeah. Committee, so, like, how do you envision this makeup? Because you've got a divisive topic where if you have, you know, more people that are for an override on the committee than aren't, then, you know, their suggestion to the select board is going to be geared one way. If you have an odd number of people, you'll get a vote. If you have an even number of people, you could have deadlock. Like, how does, how's that going to work?
I envisioned, because it's such a large question, I envisioned this to be another seven-person committee. Representative of the town. Clearly, the schools will be represented. I'm not sure the finance committee can be represented or not. Select board, superintendent, town manager, and make it seven people, right?
Okay, but if you have four, but if you have four that support the override, that's going to be their recommendation to us.
We should have a concerned parent. We should have somebody without kids in the school. It should be representative of the community, if we can make it that way.
Yeah, yeah. I just think it's always going to be weighted towards the four versus the three, whichever side it falls on.
I'm hoping it will be geared with financial professionals, right? To actually take a look at the numbers, what it means to the overall tax impact. Like, break it down to, you know, what are your housing taxes going to go up to? What are yours, what are mine?
Yeah, and that's accessible on the DLS.
I think that's key. That's really key.
Right.
For me, I don't have a problem with this committee being formed, but I want to see it in tandem with a committee that is dedicated to, strictly to brainstorming ideas for revenue generation. Because we can all get together and talk about, okay, should we do a 2.5 override this time around? But what are we doing going forward? I've asked for this a few times. I don't care if it's tri-board, I don't care if it's, if it's town. We have to start talking about brainstorming, and school committees got to be involved in it, because, you know, their portion is the largest.
Why didn't you do that four years ago?
Well, so I've been here for a year, and I'm asking for it now.
I'm saying better. Why wasn't it done four years ago? What did you do when you had a hit? When my family moved to this town for my child, and my family...
So is there, is there a movement to form a committee or not tonight?
I make a move to form, to form a committee tonight.
So can we do it with the understanding that we're going to put something on the agenda for next meeting to talk about revenue brainstorming?
We can talk to Steve. Steve, if you wouldn't mind coming up with some parameters based off of what you heard here about committee formation.
Is that town being all reassessing homes and property values? Are we looking at industrial parks? Are we looking at land leases? Other than just small mom and pop businesses, which are, are in communities, those like schools? You always ask schools to get creative. But other than businesses, how are you getting creative with bringing tenants in? I'm sorry, Lake Wallace doesn't bring tenants.
You're not an economic development professional, okay? So...
I'm not, but I have a tax pay.
It's okay. We've been moving on. So there's a motion made to form a proposition two and a half debt exclusion study planning committee. Steve will come back with some ways to form that committee.
Nobody.
Is there a second?
I recognize you don't have a second yet. I have a clarifying question. What would timeline look like this? Is this something that would serve us now, looking at upcoming town election? Or I believe that we have the ability to call a special election at any point if necessary?
We do have the ability to call a special election at any point.
So would the committee's recommendations be able to potentially go into place in time for fiscal '26?
It's a big question.
Yeah, Jen had asked earlier too about the process, and there's two steps. One would be town meeting approval. We would essentially need to bring two budgets, a town meeting, a base budget and a contingency budget. I don't believe that we can have one vote for the entire budget. Because of the way we vote our budgets, they're separate. We have separate votes for DPW highways versus sanitation and environmental, public safety, education. There's about nine different votes that we take, nine or 10. So each one of those lines would have to have a contingency budget. And that contingency budget would be the subject of a ballot initiative at the next election, which is the following week from town meeting. If we didn't have it on that election, we would have to have a special election before the end of June to make sure that we were able to have the budgets ready for FY '26.
Any questions about that? Is that law or is that just how we do it?
I believe it's law. I need, I need to double-check that, but I believe it's law because of the way we vote our budgets. You want to recognize him?
No, public comment's over tonight, sir.
I have a quick question. People are talking about saving money and getting on the ballot quickly versus having a special election, which is possible. More money that we don't have. My question is, I'm hearing a lot of for and against opinions from the board on 2.5 overrides and civic. I'm hearing about whether we get a chance to vote, should be ours. So you can form committees, which are going to take more time, potentially miss that date, or we can put it on the ballot and let the town decide the whole.
Thank you.
And just to, just to be clear, you all vote regardless, whether it's at town meeting or if it's on a ballot. It is your vote.
All right.
I'm still interested.
Me too. I think I've been volunteered for a second committee tonight.
Sorry.
We have to form this committee.
Yes, so what is the pleasure of the board?
Got a seat.
So we're bringing it back for next meeting? The formation, the makeup of the committee, or are we doing it right now?
Well, we have to vote to form the committee.
Right, no one's seconded the motion. Sounds like the motion went stale. Maybe we should do that over again.
Make the motion again?
I think so.
I make a motion to form the committee.
You got to name it, Lisa.
The debt exclusion, Prop 2.5 question committee.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
I'll second it, so we could talk about it.
Right, motion's made, seconded.
So again, is this for fiscal year '26, or is this for the future?
Probably both.
Okay, so is there enough time to form a committee? What would be the timing to get a number together to be able to put it on the ballot for the May 19 election? It's 35 days, am I correct in that?
We would have to have a special if we didn't fit it within 35 days. So town meeting is the more critical deadline, and we need to have those numbers probably the second week of April, so we have about a month. I guess it depends, Brian. How quickly, I know you said the line item budget would be prepared. How quickly can you get a line item budget and a contingency budget prepared? So we can see what the...
I mean, I don't understand why, if you're so much put on this. And you can have it tomorrow. I don't, I have nothing to hide here, but what, all right, because if I were you going to start evaluating the line items and tell us you don't need this, you need this, or you have to do this, you have to do that, like, what's, what's, what's the, what's the goal of that? Transparency, they're all online from the last five years, so I can get it out, and you're on sale. Or they're not online, they've been there.
Do you think you have some suggestion that we have not filed?
Don't know. Let's talk about it.
Will we do the same?
We have junk things for nothing.
And that's the purpose of this committee, because before we go back and ask the taxpayers that overwhelmingly defeated the middle school question, I want to make sure that when we ask them for more money permanently out of their pockets. Because that's why the select board has to approve.
What would be the number? What would be the dollar amount? What would be the dollar amount? We just asked for the 2.1. Like, I mean, I feel like there's some compromise between the two, because you're talking about Tagil, you're talking about Cold Spring, you're talking about the pool, right? So those are like tangible things that affect the town, right? So I just, I don't, I don't see how you guys couldn't come up with a number that we could put on the ballot.
It's not just a number, it's a strategic plan. You know, I, I would support a Prop 2.5. If we actually had a thoughtful strategic plan that we could present to the town and say, this is how your, your life is going to improve. Not how it's going to stay exactly the same and, and that's it, and we've, we've put the house on fire out, but we haven't looked at what caused it to get on fire in the first place. This, I, I think there is a, this is a panic. This is where, like, in a panic. And that we need to think thoughtfully and about this. Not just rush to, let's fund it. Because this is a permanent solution. This is permanent. These, you know, and there are people in this town I'm hearing from that are saying they can't, they're going to have to move because they can, they can no longer afford to stay in the houses they're in. They cannot be taxed more. What do we say to those people?
Isn't there an explosion for people all of a sudden?
No, well, no, there has been, there has been some discussion, but very vague, on... on who might be excluded. And, and honestly, it's not just folks that are in their seventies. I'm also hearing this from young families who are struggling to put food on the table and who are afraid to say anything because they're not supportive of the folks in this group. They're the real silent minority.
Any further comments from the board? Roll call vote, Whitney?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
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 Lisa?
Yes.
All right, we'll form the committee and Steve will come back with some committee makeup recommendations.
We need to talk tomorrow. You too.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
We still haven't done board reports.
Oh, we can do the rest of our meeting.
I do wanna talk about mail.
Yeah.
I'd like to remind everyone that you can still pull papers to run for office, there are two select board seats, there's a school committee seat. Wanna see you back here. Thank you for coming.
There's other committees, there's planning board, what?
Oh, and the meeting is actually not over, we'll be here for probably another half an hour if you'd like to stay.
Jen wants to say something.
No, I'm just saying, that's not the only board seats that are up, there's planning board, there's all sorts of things.
Too many, too many, too many voices in the room tonight. I appreciate your work, but.
All right, should we just, what do you wanna do? You wanna call it?
Let's move on.
Yeah, I wanna.
Steve, you wanna talk more today or you talk that?
Well, we need to give him five minutes to exit the room, so.
Yeah, can we, can we maybe take a, can we take a five minute break?
Sorry, Lisa, we can't hear you, everyone's, we are still actively in a meeting, you'd like to say we'd love to have you, but if you would like to leave, we understand.
Nice job.
I'm just suggesting we take a five minute break. Nope.
All right, shall we?
Can we take a five minute break?
Lisa's suggesting a five minute recess. It's up to you, Ed, if you wanna call.
Ed, or Lisa. Do you want a break? Do you want a break?
Yep.
Do you have a break?
We want a clarification, didn't change our minds, we got to talk about it though. Thank you. Nice meeting you in person.
You know, Steve's got a lot on his town manager's report.
Do you wanna hear it? Now manager report?
Sure.
Oh, they can sign all this stuff. They can sign all this stuff.
Ready? Yes, sir. Everybody ready?
The board ready to do this.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get started then, the, I'm gonna move on to the, I'm gonna move on to the town manager report. So, over the last two weeks, I've signed warrants, one in the amount of $1,373,537.52. Second warrant was $2,414,513.16. For those of you who are still in the audience, a warrant is our authorization sheet to pay our bills. The town accountant's office pays bills not only to general government, but to schools as well, so those warrants represent total spending over two weeks. I had a meeting with the communications committee.
We all need to be together.
There we go. To talk about the town meeting. I guess it was members of the communication committee, I'm sorry. I did attend the February 19th finance committee meeting, talk about the FY26 budgets. I've been working with town council on a decommissioning bond for Ferentz Solar, which is located off of Ware Road. That project was previously permitted and the owners are looking to get started. That will bring some revenue to the town, but again, not enough to solve our problems this year. I did attend a swearing in ceremony for firefighter Sly Moore. I've been meeting with our insurance provider to discuss FY26 property and casualty rates. Been continuing my work on the FY26 budgets, I've been meeting with the human resource director regarding our core SORI policy, employee issues and the human resources study. That's just beginning. The town received a grant to look at our senior services, our veterans agent and our recreation department, to put them under one umbrella of human services and to also look at the potential to regionalize with other communities to have shared services, so that's not a word that we're just using, one-sided tonight. I met with the board of health director Andrea, Andrea Crete regarding Sports Haven Mobile Home Park. I did go to the school budget presentation, thank you for the invite, Brian. As you heard tonight, I've been working on the alteration of outdoor premises, policy and procedure. And trying to address some new issues with the federal funding that we had in place for the Sports Haven Mobile Home Park infrastructure project. And that's getting a little bit tricky. I've been working on revisions to our post-community agreements with our marijuana establishments. I reviewed the materials for the transportation mural project. Been reviewing materials for our branding project, we're working to rebrand our community to make us more marketable in the business world. That's including the creation of a logo and updating our town seal, digitalizing it so we can actually use it. I've been working with our communications coordinator on Town Managers blog, I hope it's helpful. Been reviewing materials for our wayfinding project, as Jen mentioned earlier, tourism is, is one area that we can try to capitalize on and wayfinding will help with that. I reviewed the ZBA's proposed zoning regulations. We have a grant right now for electric vehicle charging stations to be located in the town hall parking lot, I've been working on that. Been attending the capital improvement planning committee meetings, I'm happy to report that we will have a, a final report for FY26 capital items very soon, I think within the next week. Met with the recreation director regarding the Justin Hill Community School pool finances and I attended the recent EDIC meeting. There's, was little updates with that, the Brisa project, they're still pursuing financing. We did have a resignation of one EDIC member, Richard Gump, and he was in the real estate seat. So the EDIC members each have a category that they need to be part of, so we are actively pursuing a replacement. So if you know anybody that has a background in real estate and doesn't see a conflict of interest, have them contact me. Everybody go to that.
Can I just ask a question? Can we, is there a way, I know I'm a little late to this, but to get those capital planning committees set up with go-to meeting?
Sure. Yeah, I'll ask them to work on that. The last meeting, we were, we were on go-to.
Okay, the one for this week didn't have a link, so I wasn't, I didn't see a link.
Oh, okay, I'll follow up. I know the last meeting, one of the members was remote, so I don't, I don't think they've established a routine yet. Yes, I can do that. Those meetings, not only have I attended them, but we've had the buildings grounds director from the school department, Eric LeBeau, to support his projects and our DPW director Linda Leduke has also been there. So there has been representation from both the schools and the town and the committee's pretty well prepared. The EDIC land transfer, I'm gonna move on to updates, which is behind parcel D, the survey is still ongoing. I have not had any movement with six and eight Berkshire Ave. Linda is getting a schedule for the tower, tower removal at Tadjil. The elevator project here in town hall, which is another capital project. The vendor who's doing the work has materials on order and once everything is received, the elevator will be taken offline to minimize downtime. Job description reviews are ongoing as we have vacancies or as, as we do other work. The financial organizational review, so there's been a lot of talk, you'll hear us routinely talking about the 2021 DLS report, that was a financial audit of the town. Last year, we began the process of updating that review and we should have a report in the next few weeks. That's the one where we predicted, well, I don't wanna use the term we, I wasn't, I wasn't in this position, but that's when the fiscal cliff was predicted. So it'll be interesting to see how much progress we've made on, on the recommendations with this updated report. The next meeting is scheduled for March 17th, we have a pretty busy agenda, the public works department's gonna be proposing several roads for acceptance at town meetings, so we need to take that up and refer them to the planning board. We have some appointments, we have a 60-day update if, if the board chooses, I can work with the chair from our grants administrator to give us an update on her progress to date and I think those are the highlights. And FY26 budget, I don't think we need to talk too much more about that at the moment, so we'll, we'll let that one go, so that's all I have, kind of a busy few weeks.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody want, send any mail items of interest?
I do. We're doing mail or are we doing updates?
Mail.
Mail, okay, yes. So there was an email in our incoming mail from Matt Schiffer, who is with the rec department, I'm just gonna read it. Hi all, I, I know that certificate of appreciation that is given for my, I, I'm sorry, I know that the certificate of appreciation that is given for milestone years are designated for full-time employees, but I'm hoping that you're able to make an exception. Chris Whalen was a referee for the recreation department for 25 years, he started when he was 15 years old. Chris unexpectedly passed away last week. His family would sincerely appreciate him being recognized for all of his accomplishments, he was like a brother to me, so this is very important. I don't know how we go about this, I, this is something that I'd really like to see on our next meeting, to approve this.
You just do it.
Can we, okay, I, I'd like to.
No, makes sense, he was, he was a good man.
Yep.
Are you gonna make a motion? Okay, thank you for bringing that up.
All right, board members' reports, Lisa?
Well, I've been on vacation, which has been great, but before I left, I went to an MVP 2.0 meeting and there is an upcoming event that's sponsored by both the senior center and MVP 2.0 community members, including myself. What? Oh, okay, I thought I was gonna say something, okay. That is happening in the next 10 days, so we're working towards having that event happen. I'm getting feedback, so I'm just gonna stop there.
New funding for Belchertown, Saturday, March 15th, 10 to noon and Wednesday, March 19th, 5:30 to 7:30 PM here. It's great. We can get up to $3 million in grant funding.
Sure, I just wanted also to say, anyone at home that just had me yell loudly into the microphone, I apologize, I was trying to speak to the crowd as they were being a little noisy, but I just wanted to quickly reiterate what I was attempting to say is that we do have open seats, town election is coming, we have a board of assessors seat, two board of health seats, planning board seat, school committee seat, two select board seats, housing authority, one seat for five years and two for four years. So I was just really impressed tonight with the people that came out. Civic engagement is so important and especially in our town, if you have more to give, we have so many opportunities and we are, we are ourselves volunteers though elected, we give of our time and we do it because we care deeply. So, my board report, I missed the last board meeting, I'll try to make my bullets brief. I attended the CPC meeting, the community preservation committee, on the 4th, which was a really exciting time as they were proposing their grants, which will be voted on the town meeting, but one of which is a large enough grant to repair our field, our athletic fields, which will be massive for our students and then also hopefully for some revenue generation. I met with our town planner Doug Albertson to discuss the latest master plan updates, which is a work in progress, for those of you who have read the master plan, congratulations, you're probably one of 10 people, it's massive. He's working, many people are working to make it readable and consumable and we are, we are headed in the right direction. Of course, I attended the tri board meeting on the 7th of February. On the 8th of February, I was able to meet with our new cultural district manager, Lisa Stahl, and she is hitting the ground running and coming up with great ways to connect us with new businesses. I missed a select board meeting on the 18th, on the 25th, I mentioned I attended that MMA training on town halls to talk about accessibility for town meeting. Town meeting is a bit of an outdated, yet very quaint way that we do our diplomacy in our government here, however, it's not accessible to all people, so hopefully more creativity's forthcoming. I joined a virtual school committee meeting on the 25th. On the 27th, I met with our town conservation administrator, Sarah Fortune, to learn about the work that she and her group are doing, including trail building and also some of the less fun but very important things such as storm water creation or storm water tax collection and the work they do with that. And then on this past Friday, had a wonderful time attending the Belchertown Cultural Council's reception for their grants at the Lacy Rose, which I'd never been inside, but driven past every single day and it was just great to connect with people who do such important work for our town.
So I have a lighter, lighter list because I was on vacation last week, but March 2nd, I attended the branding committee meeting. We did an appointment recommendation of our seventh and final member, her name is Lisa Ducharme, so that committee is at its max now. We also talked about scheduling, how we're gonna start with our meetings with the new graphic designer, locality, and then we started to talk about the staff surveys on what they envisioned for, for rebranding. I've also been doing additional reviews with our HR director, Joanne, regarding the health insurance renewal. For those that don't know, it's, it's a double-digit increase, it's, it's pretty high, it's, it's above trend, so I'm just still working with her to figure out ways to, just find some, some ways for savings. And, oh, and I gained three pounds last week on my cruise. That's a big one.
Will that be in the record?
She just said it out loud. I also attended the cultural council's grant reception, which they haven't done in a couple of years, so it was lovely that they had a return to that, there was a lot of good networking, a lot of interesting events that will be upcoming that were funded by the cultural council and also the Lacy Rose, which I have never been inside, which is a bed and breakfast, that is a beautiful Victorian across the street from the library. That was a joy to be able to be inside that facility and so thank you to the Lacy Rose for opening up their doors. Last week, we had a meeting, an initial cute meet, go to.
Last week, we had a meeting, an initial cute meet, go to see if this is a good fit conversation, if you will, with folks from the UMass Community Development, I don't know exactly what department they're in, but there was a study that was commissioned by the Western Mass Economic Development Council and they identified industries that were ripe for development within the Pioneer Valley that should be focused on investment at the state level, so there's many different collaborative organizations that worked on that report, but we met with the UMass folks who led us to some other folks that we should be talking to. So that was a really interesting meeting and then on March 25th, they're coming to Belcher Town and we're going to walk them around what we have going on here. I cannot read my handwriting always. We also met today with the cultural district manager, we met with a woman who owns a shop local online marketplace, sort of like an Etsy but for local artisans, and we talked about potential opportunities for pop-up branding of artisan stuff to help highlight some of that kind of work, so that'll be interesting and I also want to, oh wait, next week, we're going to have a meeting about the one-stop grant with our grant manager, I believe that's next week. And then on March 12th, I just want to highlight, we are doing a partnered event, an after-five at the, with the Amherst Chamber at our newest, one of our newest restaurants, Tables on the Green, at the golf course on 21. We're inviting folks to come out to that and if you have a business, we are trying to work on getting some more businesses and sponsoring the town, using grant funding, sponsoring some membership into the chamber, so.
That's it.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Any questions from the press? One, two, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Hi.
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 Very good, thank you.
901.
Thank you for hanging out with us.